All right, good. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, November 20, 2018, meeting of the Edina City Council. Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Fisher?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Member Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to amend the agenda, modify the agenda in any form? Or was it entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as shown?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second to adopt the agenda as shown. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. All right, we have an agenda. And then next is community comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on a matter of concern of them on an issue that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Lori Groth, 5513 Park Place. I have a question, please, about a tenant of the city's. The Red River Kitchen. My husband and I ate there on October 31st. And you pay at the counter and then you get your food. And our bill came to $19. There was no alcohol. The sales tax was $3.33. It was too high. I questioned the clerk on it. She says, "I know nothing about sales tax." She says, "There's no manager on site." The sales tax they charged was 17.526%, which is 10% higher than what the state taxes at 7.525. There was no alcohol involved. If there was, the alcohol would have been about another 2.5% to take it to be 10%. There was, you have an opportunity at the point of sale to add on gratuity. I did not add gratuity. I leave my gratuity at the table. I realize that Red River Kitchen also has an establishment in St. Paul. They have a food truck in Minneapolis. They should be able to program their computers for point of sale for what the correct sales tax is. They're going to report their sales quarterly and pay their sales tax quarterly. They are only going to pay their tax on their gross revenues. If they're overcharging by 10%, they're putting that in their pocket. I was wondering if it was just my husband and I. There was one other table with customers at the restaurant. I waited until they left and I spoke with them afterwards. There were two couples. One couple did not retain the receipt. The other gentleman pulled his out of his pocket. He was charged the same amount on the sales tax overcharge. We don't have an entertainment tax, as far as I'm aware of, in the city. There is no hotel tax there because there is no hotel tax. So, I'm trying to figure out where the extra 10% is going. The only place I can see is that it's going in the restaurant's pocket. Now, I could go to the revenue department at the state. They'll send somebody out. They'll take a look. But I'd rather go to the city since you're, they're your tenant. And so maybe you can approach them with that.
Sure. Is there a way to get a copy of your receipt?
Yes, I can, but I would like to black out my credit card number and so forth like that.
Your credit card number better not be on there.
Well, they give the last four digits and they give my name and I don't care to have that.
Okay.
On the public record. I can deal with Jennifer later on.
All right, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. All right, we'll deal with that. Anyone else?
My name is Frank Lorenz and I live at 7151 York Avenue South in Edina. I might suggest to the ninth grade students that they use the Google search engine and call up Bell, B-E-L-L, California. That's a small city in Southern California. And when they look at what has happened to that city in the last five years and see if they can draw any analogies or correlations between Bell, California, and Edina. But having said that, I want to suggest that the city council needs to give the chief of police some guidance in the following areas. Current chief of police inherited a well-run, well-trained organization and he's kept it that way. But in the last 18 months, a number of women, mothers of children, residents of Edina have complained that the police patrol officers are stopping children of color as they bicycle around the various neighborhoods in Edina. And these women are distraught, or at least they're good actresses, but I don't know which. But they say that the police officers are profiling their children. And by children, I mean usually children less than 13 years old, 13 or 14 years old. The problem in just telling the police chief to tell his officers to stop stopping children is that there are three very violent, very active street gangs, active in Richfield. And if I didn't have bursitis in my shoulder, I could throw a baseball from where I live in Edina and have it land in Richfield. And some of these street gangs are run by men in their mid-20s to early 30s, but they use young children to scope out a neighborhood, to find out which people leave their garage door open and which houses seem to be unoccupied for a long period of time if the resident is going to a southern state to spend several months. So if the police chief is told, "Don't stop any children on bicyclists," he's going to increase the amount of property crime in Edina. It's just absolutely true.
All right.
And leaving it at that.
All right. Anyone else for concerns of residents? All right. Manager Neal, last week, we had Mr. Lorenz here and he had a concern about pizza acquisitions. Thought that we were purchasing pizza, I think, for our employees. And at least that was the, as I recall, the assertion, or a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was now. Have you had a chance to look into that issue?
Yes, sir. And what I would like to do, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is we started a new practice a couple of months ago of responding in a more formal way to questions or concerns or allegations raised at community comment. I've been responding to them during my report, which tends to be pretty late in the meeting. And by that time, there's typically not too many people left in the council chambers. And while it could be watched on television, it doesn't get too many viewers at that point. So I would like to take, when we're done with community comment, to move that response period up and have it at this time. And so last, at our last council meeting, we had one comment, one person off our community comment, Mr. Frank Lorenz. His comments started with some comments about chairs in the aisle width and how the, whether that was wide enough over there. And I think it's better this time. But he also made some comments, I went back to the video to watch him today, about why is the city spending $900 to $1,000 a week on pizza? And that he was sure that most of that pizza was being consumed by city employees and he's not sure why you would do that. That is absolutely not true. That pizza that he was looking at in the payment of claims, those pizza expenditures, were actually pizza expenditures for concessions. And actually, in the payment of claims, it says, right at the payment of claims, in the notation, Edinburgh Park concessions or arena concessions. So that notation is in the payment of claims document that was available to be seen by anyone. So far this year, we have spent $26,000 on pizza. We've sold that $26,000 of pizza for $31,000. So we've made $5,700 on pizza and it's an 18% return on pizza. And we sell pizza at Edinburgh Park and at the arena as a standard part of our concessions.
All right. Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's all.
Okay. Mr. Lorenz was also encouraging tonight that students in the audience, and incidentally, students, you're ninth graders, Mr. Stateum's class from the high school, correct? You're here for government? All right, good. Thanks. Good to have you here. Alluded to Bell, California. I think everybody up here knows about Bell, California. Pardon me?
This is the attendance shot right there.
Okay, good. Let us have that again. You guys can see yourselves on the monitor.
Stand as I said, there's a few people over there.
Good. All right. Mr. Neal, you want to comment at all about any comparative between Bell, California's operation as a city government?
They are both city governments. That's about the only thing they have in common. They're one, Bell, California was an example of horrible local government corruption. And people are in jail there because of that. And we do not have that situation here.
Also want to just note here, as we move into the consent agenda, that we have our new city council member-elect with us this evening. Mr. Anderson, you want to just walk up to the, one of the side podiums, give folks a chance to meet you that are here in the audience and also at home, get a chance to see you and introduce yourself and?
Well, thank you. Ronnie Anderson, pleasure to be here tonight. I'm an observer and after the first of the year, I imagine I'll be on the other side of the dais there. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that opportunity.
All right, good. Welcome. We'll see you in January.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks for coming this evening. All right, on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Brindle? Oh, Member Fisher?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item J.
All right.
The Arden Park bid award?
Right.
Your honor.
Manager Neal?
I have one that I should have asked to be removed from the agenda altogether, and that's item F. That one was, should have been removed from the agenda. Doesn't need a council approval tonight.
Okay. Is there a motion to remove item 5F from the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to remove 5F from the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. Anything other than J? I would like to pull D, just for some conversation, and then E as well, D and E. And so we've got D, E, and J. Anything else? Okay.
I'd move the consent agenda absent those items.
Second.
We got a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items D, E, and J. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. D was mine. That was the three fire engines and one aerial truck requested for purchase within, I think, normal budget. But it is a deviation from past practice, significant deviation from past practice. When I first got on the council, we were, I was part of a council that saw requests to rehab fire trucks. Now we're suggesting that we buy three new fire trucks and one aerial truck all at one time. And I think we should have a little conversation about that. So who wants to address that issue?
We are not, I don't have the chief here tonight to discuss that item. Could we table that to our next council meeting?
We could.
Okay.
Is there a motion to table 5D to the next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to table 5D to the next meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. E, request for purchase ambulance billing and collection services contract. I was a little bit curious about the circumstances that led to us needing to let a new contract. It looked like there were some issues with the prior services provider, prior vendor.
Mayor, members of the city council. So our previous or in our current billing provider, Intermedix, was acquired by a larger company who was, through an agreement with the state of Minnesota, agreed not to conduct business in the state of Minnesota. So they essentially fired us. So we had to go out and find a new vendor.
All right.
In relatively short order. So this has been a fairly quick process in order to get a new vendor on board.
All right. Member Stewart?
As long as we have this discussion up, I had asked the city manager to let us know. There were actually quite a number of vendors that were looked at and many of whom even provided bids, which was unclear to me from the information provided. So I was glad that we had really a good competitive process. The other thing, I wanted to make sure that we have, we use and engage a vendor who's responsible about their collection practices and in terms of using the city's name in particular, does a good job on behalf of the city and is respectful of debtor rights. And I believe we have somebody who does that. So I just wanted to put that into the record. Thank you.
Good. Bear with me a moment, though. The request for the new vendor also caused me to think about what kind of collection issues do we have relative to providing ambulance service in our community? What portion of those services provided fall into a 90-day, older than 90-day collection status, 60-day, 30-day?
So, Mayor, members of the city council. So probably the challenge that we face mostly is just the timing of the billing. As many people know, when you go through the insurance process, it takes quite a while to get through the process. So a lot of our billing is, actually our collections is delayed primarily just because of the, kind of the insurance billing process. The other challenge that we face is Medicare only pays a fixed dollar amount for ambulance services. That's really not a collection issue. That's more of a revenue issue from our perspective. And in some cases, people are just unable to pay or unwilling to pay. And we will have several discussions with them in an attempt to secure some collections at least.
So we found it to be true that it's more economical for us to hire somebody to do this and to do it ourselves? Is that the idea? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the city council. The amount of time it takes to do this and the, kind of the knowledge and expertise in this ambulance billing process is incredible and staff does not have that expertise.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you. Is there, well, I'll make a motion to approve the request for purchase of the ambulance billing and collection services contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. And then item J, Member Fisher?
Yeah, thank you. I asked for this to be removed because in the past, on all issues related to Arden Park, I've recused myself and I just wanted to make sure this was pulled apart so all of you can vote on it. So that's it.
All right, okay, good. Does anybody else have any questions with respect to this matter?
I do.
Yeah?
Just a couple, a couple clarifications. When we were here last for the 90% design report, it included discussion about the structure, the building, the design of the building. And the bid package that came back does not include that. So I think it's more a point of clarification than anything because we spent time talking about the building and what, you know, and the building design. And it was, it was our understanding that that was not going to be part of this bid. And so I just wanted that as a point of clarification. Then there were a couple of bid alternates that were items that could be added to the base bid. And there were three of them, and one, two, and three. And staff has recommended putting forth alternates two and three, one of those being the North Loop Trail, one of those being the warranty for vegetation in the park for one year. And the one bid alternate that was not advanced is the pervious surfaces. And I'd like to talk about that and find out why.
Councilmember Brindle, in our agreement with the Watershed District, we structured it so that any additional cost for pervious surfaces would be attributed to the Watershed District because that's part of their clean water goal. And they would have sole discretion as to whether to order that alternate or not. They chose not to. So bid alternate one isn't part of our recommendation.
Okay. So it's based on a discussion and an agreement you have with the Watershed District?
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, I'll concede. But knowing that the engineering and design around the management of stormwater is going to be handled very carefully so that it's going to be much more, the park itself will be much more usable than it is today. And so maybe that's the trade-off between the two. And that's their thinking. Then, okay, so there's a detailed cost allocation table in here. And this is just a nitpicky thing. But I got to the bottom of it and there's the bid of $3,085,904. But the actual project cost is totaled on the next page because we need to, we need to include construction, the design phase one and the construction administration. So I guess it, the picky part of this is that I would have appreciated that all being in one table so that you saw the base bid amount of $3,085,000, et cetera, and then you saw these two pieces added to that for a total. Because I'm looking at it and I had, I had conversation with a resident, emails with a couple of other residents about what's the, what's the total? What's the number? And so having one total and then another saying total estimated project cost, it just, that was the reason for the conversation with the residents. So I just wanted to ask for that.
Do you, are you asking them to rewrite this?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just another point of clarification, really.
Okay.
For the future, I think you were thinking.
For the future, yeah. For the future is that I'd like one table that comes down to a total. And then in bid package number two, knowing that that is going into the future, we have a finite amount of money that is set aside for the building and the playground and the design of both. And looking at the possibility that the bid could come higher than the amount of money that we have set aside, do you have any approach at this point of what you would recommend if that were to happen?
Councilmember Brindle, the playground portion is a set dollar amount. We tell them how much we want to spend and that will not go higher than what we allocate. As far as the shelter building, we have done some preliminary estimating on the building itself and it does appear as if it should come in under budget. We have not yet determined, and typically, you know, we don't have a plan other than contingency dollars to cover any overages. We certainly have options of changing the scope. If a building would come in significantly over budget, that would probably be my first recommendation.
Okay.
Would be to change the scope.
Well, that, knowing that it's in the future, I did want to suggest that we are looking at the nicest park building that we would build in this city. And not that I begrudge Arden Park from having the nicest building. It would seem that a review of the building and its design would be appropriate.
Typically, Councilmember Brindle, if we have a situation where a bid comes in high, we have an opportunity to go back to the bidding companies and find out why the bid came in high.
Okay.
And we can make some modifications to the design if that should happen.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's what I have.
Other questions on Arden Park? All right, here's the action request with respect to this particular matter. Approve the award of bid plus alternate two and alternate three. Approve construction administration professional service. Approve maintenance covenant and waive the building permit fee for this project and the future shelter project. Is there a motion to adopt those actions requested?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. All right, we are now going to, well, normally in our agenda, we'd have special recognitions and presentations at some level. We don't have any this evening. We have next on the agenda, public hearings, and we only have one public hearing this evening. So you students picked a great night to be here. Instead of being here until 1:00 in the morning, you're going to be here, you know, not that much longer. Don't be sneaking out now. We're going to hold you, 9:00 maybe. And Member Newendorf has this matter, along with Nick Anhut from Ellers and Associates.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. The resolution tonight and the purpose of this public hearing is to get input and then consider the establishment of a new tax increment financing district on West 76th Street. And also, secondly, to modify an existing TIF district, the Southdale II TIF district. The reason that we're bringing these forth tonight is to make additional progress on delivering affordably priced housing in Edina, an effort that we've been working on for many, many years. In 2014 and then again in 2017, the city did secure special legislation in St. Paul to help support affordably priced housing without overburdening our local taxpayers. And our intention there is to use tax increment financing to help support those projects. This particular special legislation was first used to fund the Beacon Interfaith project on West 66th Street. And with the resolution, with the resolution in front of you this evening, we propose to use that legislation a second time to help support a new project on West 76th Street, a project that has been talked about for several months. So the action tonight follows through on some preliminary pledges that we considered back in May of this year. Aon, the development company, first approached the city quite some time ago and had secured access to a piece of property and started to put their financing together for that. One of the integral steps is local financing, although the majority of the money comes from the state through the tax credit program. But the city's funds, rather than going right to the tax levy, we would use tax increment financing. And that's one of those tools that's available to the city to help encourage new investment and to help deliver upon those community goals. I have a brief presentation this evening that I'll run through that addresses some key details of these, of the new district, as well as the proposed amendment to the Southdale district. And as I go through the presentation or after I finish here, I also want to make note that we have a representative from the developer. Aubrey Gould is with us this evening to answer any questions that you may have, and also Nick Anhut with Ellers, who's the city's financial advisor in this matter. The particular site is- The particular site is at 4100 West 76th Street. It's a small parcel. It's a two-acre parcel. It was initially constructed back in the late 1960s as commercial flex space. For several years in the late 80s and into the 2000s, it served as the home of Flight Time Studios, a nationally, internationally recognized recording studio. That business moved out of Adana in 2004. They moved it to Los Angeles. And from 2004 to 2016, a media and recording studio, or I'm sorry, school was held in that facility. But that business left in 2006, and the property has been largely underutilized and for sale for a few years. Aeon has been able to secure the property. They actually closed on it a few weeks ago. And one of the reasons that we've considered working with them on this effort is to help further some of the community goals that date back many years, but in most recent history to the 2015 Community Vision, a document that we worked on after getting considerable community input, where we identified the creation of affordable housing as one of those community goals. But also, create housing, not in a vacuum, but in a context where residents can take advantage of access to jobs, access to services, access to transit. So, certainly, this location hits on all of those goals. Oftentimes, we're asked about TIF. What is TIF? Why has it worked? Or how does it work? Why do we use TIF? And it's, tax increment financing was first used in California back in the 70s. It currently is used in every state in the nation. In Minnesota, it's governed by Minnesota statute, statute that's been around since the mid-1970s. And that gets adopted or adapted and revised every couple of years. So, the state legislature certainly has a number of checks and balances written into that state law. But the use of tax increment financing is largely a local decision, decided by our city council. The chart that's up on the screen shows an example of tax base and what happens when you create a TIF district. Typically, you have property taxes that are paid by a property. They continue to pay their taxes. In this particular chart, in the purple color, throughout the life of the district, this chart shows that those initial taxes continue to go to the schools and the county and the city and all the other taxing agencies. But those incremental taxes, those new taxes, are held and remain within that district to help fund those improvements that are desired by the general public. When the district terminates, in this particular case, we're looking at a 20-year-long district, the entirety of the new property taxes would be distributed to the city, schools, counties, et cetera. So, there's benefit on several grounds. The action that we're considering tonight is one of several steps in this process that's mandated by the Minnesota statutes. We create a TIF district separately from actually funding a project. So, that's ultimately the request, and that's the subject of the resolution before you this evening, is to create a district. Prior to coming here this evening, we met with our planning commission last week. Prior to that, we reached out to the schools, both Adana schools and the Richfield schools, as well as Hennepin County, to give them preliminary input as we put this draft together. And after we create a district, if we do take that action, we would then consider specific funding agreement with the developer, with Aeon. That step would probably be coming in the next several months. When it comes to the use of tax increment in Adana, we currently have six small TIF districts. The largest TIF district is what's called Southdale II, which encompasses the mall as well as the properties that immediately surround the mall. We have a number of smaller districts in Grandview, 44th and France, 50th and France. It's important to note, though, that since the Great Recession broke in 2011, Adana has seen about 52 major commercial redevelopments. That's not new tenants, that's not remodeling, that's the tear-down and rebuild. So, that's quite a number. The vast majority of those have been completely privately financed. The city did, however, choose to help five of those projects with their public financing because they delivered on several public goals that we had. This chart shows the relative use of tax increment financing in Adana, as well as in our surrounding communities. So, Adana is the green bar right in the center, and this indicates that about 3% of the city's tax capacity is held within a TIF district. By comparison, many of our neighbors use, or they have quite an additional amount of tax capacity in their TIF district. This isn't really a measure of right or wrong. There's no incorrect or perfectly correct way to do this. But what we're trying to illustrate here is that, to a large extent, Adana uses tax increment financing to a much lesser extent than many of our peers. So, the resolution tonight proposes to create this new two-acre district. It consists of one parcel outlined in the yellow here. We're recommending that we take advantage of that special legislation we secured a few years ago and create a housing district that's 20 years long. We would enable pooling of monies from the Southdale District to allow the construction on this parcel. And we would also enable the potential acquisition of this parcel if we think that makes strategic sense for the community. One of the most important parts of the TIF plan is the budget about, it covers an estimate of the revenues that are expected to come in over that 20 years, and also how those monies would be expended. In this case, Ellers estimates that over 20 years, we would collect just slightly over $2 million in incremental property taxes. So, that does not include the base taxes that go to the schools, the county and the city, but that's the new revenue that would be collected. And in this case, the table on the right side of this slide shows that the majority of those monies, the vast majority, would be used specifically for affordable housing or for interest that's paid on the mortgage. Typically, when a city creates a TIF district, you have to pass a BUT4 test. For housing districts, however, the BUT4 test is a little bit different. And that's triggered by the fact that a minimum of 20% of these units must be affordably priced at the target price point, not for the city's policy of 15 years, but for 25 years. So, it raises the bar quite a bit. And when you raise the term of affordability and you lower the rent, essentially, you create a district where the rent that's paid will not pay for the construction, won't pay for the operating costs. And that's why you need a lot of additional sources, local revenue, state revenue, et cetera. So, for the creation of a housing district, the BUT4 test I mentioned is a little bit different. But since this proposal is expected to be 100% affordable, it's clear that they will have a financial gap in their pro forma. And it's reasonable to expect that without the use of tax increment financing on this site, the project just won't move forward. So, certainly, for our first part of our resolution tonight, it's our recommendation that we go ahead and create this new tax increment district.
Point of clarification.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. On a slide earlier, you identified a term of 20 years for the TIF district. And I would like to make it clear that that does not mean that the property is affordable for 20 years. The property, I believe, is affordable forever. And so, that's compared with some of the other developments in our city that are under consideration or have currently been built or under construction, where a percentage of the apartments are affordable for a term of 15 years or 25 years. The apartments in this building at 4100 West 76th Street would be affordable with no end in sight. It's just the TIF district, the length of that term is 20 years.
Mayor and councilmember, that's essentially correct, and that's a key clarification to make. So, with the special legislation that Adana had passed a few years ago, the TIF district lasts for 20 years. But the developer needs, in order to enable this particular piece of legislation, the developer has to commit to at least 25 years. In this particular case, Aeon has verbally indicated that typically for their financing, they would expect at least 30 to 40 years. As a company, they're a mission-driven company. They do affordable housing, and that's their mission statement. So, in reality, it should be forever. But we're getting a slight, we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. When we actually do a contract between the city and the developer, that's where we'll be more articulate about that actual term of affordability. But in order to create the district, we have to pledge a minimum of 25 years, and that certainly is agreeable to the developer. And we just haven't gotten into the precise language. Is it really 30 years? Is it really 40 years? Or is it really forever? It's kind of hard to make a pledge of forever. But that's certainly, at this point, that's what they do, and that is their intention.
Okay. Thank you.
The second piece of the recommendation tonight is an amendment to the Southdale II TIF plan. Southdale II was first created right when we were getting out of the recession in 2011. This was created as an economic development district. It's a relatively short-term district that will expire in 2021. In order to help fund affordably priced housing, like the one on 76th Street, we must modify the budget within this particular TIF district. And that is the subject of the amendment tonight. So, it's a fairly simple amendment. But before I get into that, I just wanted to go backwards in history for a moment and remind ourselves why we got involved and why we created this TIF district in the first place. So, I mentioned that this district was created in 2011 at a time when the mall was suffering from disinvestment. There is fewer stores than there are today. It had bounced around between mergers, between corporate mergers from one ownership group to the next, and it never got updated as it could have. The table here shows the tax value, I'm sorry, the tax capacity as well as the market value. We were able to go back and find information for about six years prior to the creation of this TIF district, and the charts speak for themselves. It shows a steady and rapid decline of value of that property. If you remember what it looked like back in the mid-2000s, it was not a vibrant, happy place. There was not a lot of activity, and it was continuing to decline. So, the city took that action in 2011 to create a TIF district here. We did negotiate a $5 million interest-free loan with the owner of the mall, provided that they put at least $15 million, not into the mall itself, but into the public areas of the mall. So, at the end of their redo of the property back in 2012, they put in close to $40 million to redo the tenant spaces, the concourses, all the entrances, new sidewalks, new lighting, et cetera. So, they certainly met and, you know, tripled their minimum investment in the property. This chart also shows what happened after they reinvested, which was exactly what we had hoped would happen. The valuation rapidly turned from a plummet downward to a sharp increase. And these numbers are a year and a half old. I haven't polled the most recent numbers, but the trend continues to go up. So, certainly, the use of tax increment in this district did exactly what we had hoped it would do. And certainly, while the mall itself still has some vacancies that need to get filled here, the district as a whole has made a dramatic turnaround. This map shows the boundaries of the Southdale II district. The map is a little bit confusing, so let me walk through it. All of the yellow lines are the boundaries of the various properties or parcels. One other unique thing is about this greater Southdale district is that the Adana School District and the Richfield School District overlap in this area. So, the northern half of the mall is actually in the Richfield School District. The southern half is in the Adana School District. And so, that adds a layer of complexity to the actual TIF document. This district has about 300 parcels. It's a big district. It's about 200 acres. But since we created this TIF district, 11 new redevelopment projects have happened in this area. So, of the 52 throughout the city, 11 of them happen in the district. The majority happen outside of the district. And the increase in the market value, again, this slide is about a year old, but it's more than $300 million of an improvement in the overall market value. The slide breaks down the distribution to the Adana School District and the Richfield. But certainly, that achieves the goals that we're looking for. So, each of these circles identifies a new project that's been completed. All those are in the Richfield School District. There's several in the Adana School District. That just shows what's completed. And as you've seen by the construction cranes over the years, there's a lot that is still happening. So, there's another five or six projects that are currently under construction or expected to be under construction soon. Again, it shows for a very healthy district that is performing very well. So, in the initial TIF plan, we had a projected budget, and we found that the numbers are going to be much higher, the actual numbers, would be much higher than we projected. So, in order to help with the goal of financing affordable housing, our recommendation is to increase the budget of this TIF district from about $12 million up to about $30 million. So, it's a significant change. It's recognized that this TIF district does expire in a couple of years. So, this money that is in the district will be returned to the overall communities, to the county, city, schools, et cetera, in 2021. So, there's a lot of numbers there, but it shows a good overview of our two-part proposal to create a new tax increment district on 76th Street, and then to modify the Southdale budget to enable that, not just that project, but hopefully some other affordably priced projects in town. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and also, if appropriate, I would call on some of our other advisors in the room if you so choose.
Sure. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Newendorf? Would you back up to that last slide before the question discussion slide? Interested in, you know, you've built the case, I'll say, for how the district has increased in value, but how'd you go about creating the new budget? Based in part on what you showed us, I'm sure, but how did you decide?
Sure.
What was the basis on which you determined that we should consider raising the budget from its original amount of $12 million to a modified budget of more than twice that amount, almost three times that amount?
Great question. I'll have Nick Anhut from Ellers. He's the one that helped prepare most of those numbers. I think he'd best answer your question. But the simple answer, I can give you the simple answer, is with the projected need of affordable housing in the community, that was taken into sharp consideration as we crafted this budget. So, the Southdale District has superbly delivered luxury housing at a high market price. Where it hasn't delivered, with just one or two small exceptions, is that affordably priced housing. So, what we're hoping to do is capture some of these tax revenues that are paid by the market rate projects and help build other projects that are affordably priced on other parcels or in other parts of town. So, that's a high-level answer about why we wanted to bump the budget. But let me turn it over to Nick.
So, yeah, I think I'm interested in this answer with more specificity, but my sense is that this district has done exactly what we hoped it would do, that when we loaned money to the Southdale Mall to help them maximize the remodel, and the total expenditure was somewhere between $30 and $45 million, let's say, has stabilized that whole neighborhood, and it gave everybody the confidence to invest in their properties around it. And because that was, they were all in a TIF district, it's been a roaring success, as best I can see. But I'd be interested in the more technical explanation from Mr. Anhut.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates, TIF advisor to the city. As Mr. Newendorf mentioned, there has been quite a bit of development that has occurred over the last couple of years within this district. As originally planned, the budget for the district was established in order to provide the impetus for the loan to Simon Property. the impetus for the loan to Simon Properties to redevelop the site. We became aware within the last three years, based on the development activity, that that revenue capacity would be exceeded in 18 or 2019. And we're at that point where you are collecting the increment that is necessary to service that, that loan obligation and make sure that that is diffused. However, as Mr. Newendorf mentioned, we did receive special legislation and approval to pool this money throughout the city of Edina towards affordable housing projects. And so we've gone through an analysis to look at all that development activity within the Southdale area and the projected activity over the course of the next three years, which is the remaining life of this TIF district. And looking at all of that potential development, the value associated with that, we created a budget, a revenue budget, if you will, that potentially, over the course of the next three years and the previous five years of collection, that you will have collected potentially $31 million worth of TIF revenues. And we've built an expenditure budget, assuming that any of those resources, over and above what has been committed to service the original financing for the Simon redevelopment, would go towards affordable housing projects, as is authorized under the special legislation.
Okay, good. That prompt any questions for Mr. Anhut? Member Stewart?
Thank you. Mr. Anhut, would you characterize your assumptions in making those observations and that projection as conservative or aggressive or most likely case?
I would say middle of the road. We've looked at the existing value in place. We've, we've pulled some information from the county, as well as the local assessors, to put together those projections and just carry them forward for an additional three years. So I, I think we're fairly certain.
But again, your projection is really just for the property under question, and the intention of a TIF would be, one of the intentions would be that it would be a catalyst for development for all the surrounding properties. So there may in fact be a significant increase in the taxable, the tax base of all the surrounding properties. Is that not right?
So we have included estimates for what we see in the pipeline as far as approved development projects, but there, there still is time yet. There still are three more years. So, so yes, if there is further redevelopment or...
No, I'm saying things that are done without TIF, just because...
All of this is, yeah, I would say all of this that we're looking at is, is potentially that spillover redevelopment, not just the mall property itself, but all the other hotel and other activity that are taking place on that block. But yes, I...
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Newendorf or Mr. Anhut? All right, gentlemen, stand by. This is a public hearing matter. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and address the council with regard to this matter? Make an inquiry, make a comment? This is your opportunity. It's now open for public testimony. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Hope Melton. I live at 4825 Valley View Road in Edina, and I speak to urge your support for Council Resolution 218-120 that would create a TIF district and budget modifications to provide bridge funding for the Aeon Affordable Housing Project at 4100 West 76th Street. This project with 80 units of permanently affordable, or whether it's 40 years or whatever it is, it's a big deal, and it will go a long way to help the city achieve its affordable housing and its equity and diversity goals. The proposed TIF, TIF district is located within the boundaries of the Southeast Edina Redevelopment Project area. It complies with state requirements for a quote "20-year housing project" end quote. It is appropriately located near shopping, employment opportunities, Southdale, the medical, the whole medical industry located there, and elementary school, parks, and pedestrian ways, and public transportation. I will say again, as I've said before, as someone who's lived abroad for a considerable amount of time, if we as a society, in contrast to almost all other advanced societies, insist on viewing housing as a commercial commodity as opposed to a public good, that is something essential to the healthy development of all people and significantly funded by the federal government, then we must look to the private sector financing and tools like TIF to produce affordable housing. It can't be done in Edina without that. Another concern besides the city's use of TIF, TIF money has been the overcrowding of Edina schools as a result of projects like this, and that's a legitimate concern, but one that the city has stated that it is committed to addressing by communicating and cooperating with the school district, and I don't know any other way to resolve that concern. So that cooperation, I think we assume, is, is ongoing. Finally, Aeon has an excellent track record for building and managing its affordable buildings. Getting a successful project like this on the ground will be key to convincing our community stakeholders that affordable housing is a win-win-win proposition, a win for those who live there, a win for our business community with housing for its employees, a win for the whole community because it reflects Edina's vision of itself as a welcoming, diverse, and equitable community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Melton. Anyone else wish to testify regarding this matter?
Frank Lorenz, 7151 York Avenue South, Edina. Some months ago, City Manager Neil advised me in this room that TIF districts only account for about 2% of the property value, the assessed fair market value property value in Edina. That's fine, but other cities who have played the TIF game longer, like Minneapolis, now Minneapolis has 21, 21%, a fifth of their assessed market value in TIFs. So this is something like just taking a little bit of cocaine or a little bit of fentanyl. Once you get a taste for it, it's pretty hard to stop. But beyond that, the nonprofit Aeon, Aeon is it pronounced? Doesn't make any difference. They have a good, a good reputation, so people probably shouldn't have any problem with the city dealing with them, but it's not clear what you mean when you say affordable housing. HUD, the federal agency, says that if people are spending more than 30% of their gross income, wages, salaries, whatever, then they are housing burdened. But I'm not sure whether you are using the average median income for Edina, which I believe is about $82,000 a year per household, and multiplying that by 30% or multiplying it by some other number. But you need to get your definitions out in public because, for example, a schoolteacher starting out in the Edina Public School System, I believe makes about $46,000 a year. A policeman or a fireman, and I, you'll correct me later if I'm wrong, starts out, when they join the force, at about $55,000 a year. I'm not sure that that's right, but it's not $100,000, and it's not $25,000. So both those people, the sworn services and the teachers, would, would qualify for some housing assistance. But if the teacher or the fireman, policeman could use a room, you know, get together and find a roommate, then that $46,000 household income becomes $92,000, and they're right up there on top of it. So for whom are you building this affordable housing? You need to get the definitions of who you're building it for and what the numbers are.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenz. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Barry Rosenthal, 6205 Scotia Drive. Ms. Melton eloquently stated the case for approving it. I'd like to just add on a few things. We have, you know, we have a need for affordable housing. We have an obligation to provide affordable housing under the law. If this is seem, or this seems to be a very well-thought-out plan to provide affordable housing, and if this doesn't qualify, I just cannot imagine where we would do it. Also, in relation to schools, after the Town Hall Forum on Saturday, I, I was talking with one of the school board members who was there, and she noted that enrollment is actually a little below projections, and that having additional students, which would be in, which would be in this building that we hope to be, is being contemplated, would bring in around $10,000 a year per student through the school district that the school district really needs right now. Now, we're projecting out several years. We don't know exactly what the enrollment would be, but it certainly is something to consider that making this, approving this resolution would facilitate additional aid to the schools, and would far exceed any loss to the schools from TIF revenue loss. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Mayor, council members, my name is Chris Bremer. I live at 6001 Ewing Avenue South, and I'm here to also speak in favor of, of this proposal. I think it, as, as Mr. Rosenthal said, if, if this project doesn't meet the guidelines for TIF funding, it's hard to imagine what would. Aeon is a well-respected organization that has done a wonderful job with their other And as our community and region grow and our healthy economy continues to grow, the need for housing for our nurses, teachers, public servants, retail workers, and others is clear. We don't want them living in fifth-ring exurbs. There's no way to provide, to offer transportation there. We have the potential of, we have transportation here. We have food. We have services. We have jobs for other family members that don't require that every family member own a car, and this is exactly what we should be wanting for a greener, healthier, and more just and fair community. A special feature of the Aeon location is that it is within the Edina School District, and as I think you probably know, most of, almost none of the affordable housing currently in Edina, except for the naturally occurring affordable housing, like small houses and such, or older apartments, almost none of the, none of the intentionally built affordable housing, except for a small development, is in the Edina School District. And, and most of our, and we, we have affordable units for seniors. They don't need to be in the school district, but the Section 8 housing that's by the Southdale Y is in the Richfield School District, and this denies the access by students who could very much benefit from our school district. It prevents them from having that, and I think this is a, this is a fairness and equity issue that I, I hope our students will take note of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bremer. All right. Seeing no one else coming forward, hearing nothing, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Got a motion second to close the public hearing discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? Is Ms. Gould here? Or is, oh, she is.
Yep, she's here.
If you want to come up here, I think you may, maybe Mr. Newendorf can do this too, but I think you'd be a better person to answer the question. Mr. Lorenz raised the issue of what's the definition of affordable housing, and we talked about that, I think. When the project was approved, this is, this is the issue tonight, is whether or not we're going to allow the use of tax increment financing to help finance this project. But it's been approved, and when you came in for approval, what did you talk about in terms of your definition of affordability?
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Aubrey Gould. I'm with Aeon, and so the definition of affordable housing by the federal government, the Housing and Urban Development Department, is that it's at 60% area median income. So the federal government looks at counties for that income, so they get the median income for counties. So for Edina, it is Hennepin County, and I don't have the number offhand, but it's around $96,000 is the median income in Hennepin County. And so then, affordable housing that is able to apply for tax credits through the federal government has to have affordable housing that is 60% area median income or less. So it's 60% of that 96 number, or it could be 50% of that number, or 30%. So this project would have 60, 50, and 30% AMI for the building.
Right, good. That prompt any other follow-on for Ms. Gould?
Just to clarify, those are the occupants. That's the income for the occupants.
Correct. Yes, they would need to meet that income limit.
Right. And then, then the amount that they would pay for a unit is a whole different table.
Yeah, so then there's income, there's rent limits off of that as well. So there's income and rent limits that are published.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Council, we can, members, we can have a motion and then have a discussion. The motion would be to adopt Resolution 2018-120, Establishing West 76th Street Tax Increment Financing District and Modifying Southdale Two Tax Increment Financing Plan, all embodied, as I mentioned, in Resolution 2018-120. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you. Discussion, thoughts, comments? Member Fisher, I think you had said something earlier about wanting a comment.
Well, I, I just, you know, I, I think this is a really good use for TIF, and, and I just wanted to clarify a few things. Mr. Lorenz made a comment about the city of Minneapolis being about 20% of their tax base tied up in TIF, and according to our staff graph, it was more like 8.7%. So just for whatever that's worth. The, the, a number of comments are made, and we all make it, and we all, I think there's so much misinformation, or I don't even think it's misinformation, it's just plain confusing. Can we just, it's, TIF is confusing, and, and I think what's confusing about it is how it impacts the schools and the county and frankly, the city. And what's, so I've tried to spend a significant amount of time at the school district, talking to board members, talking to staff, finance directors, really understanding the ins and outs of how this impacts on the other side. Even Mr. Rosenthal, when you, you talked about, made great points, but the comment about it's worth a little bit less that the school district might get, and that's true, that they wouldn't get, well, actually, it's not true. It's not about what they get, it's about how they levy taxes. So if you break down how, I'm just going to focus on the school district, how school districts get their money, and the comment was made about number of students. That is the single most important source of income for the school district is the general ed formula, which is how many thousands of dollars per student that they have in the district. So if the district's down 100 students this year, they're losing, if, if the number's 10,000, it's 10,000 times 100. That's what they're losing. That's real money. So that's their number-one way, is the formula by student. Then there's this, from the state, the special funding that student, school districts get, which is also based on student counts. That's like the gifted, the special ed, all of those kind of special grants that come through the state, based on student count. The operating referendum, and actually, what would be helpful is if, Bill, is it possible to bring up your, your chart that shows, is the early one that shows it's the purple and the yellow? That one. So the operating referendum, if you're, if we've got this money in the, in a TIF district from this property, what's interesting is when the school district has an operating referendum, which they have every few years, that operating referendum is actually based on the higher, not the fixed value of the TIF district, but the value that the property would normally be. So it's not actually negatively influenced by the amount in there. And the technology referendums, building referendums, and the annual budget levy are all based on this frozen state, which is the state that the district would have started in. in. But the bigger point is, and this is the part that I mess up all the time, we all mess up all the time, is it's not like these properties dish out money to the different entities. It's that the different entities, and that whether that's the city or the school district, we determine, so the school district's very much like us. We, they determine what they need, what they're willing to tax all of us for, for just operating the district, doing their thing. And then they, they, they put that levy out there, and we all pay our little share. So if your property and my property are all a little slice of that pie, the difference is that this property, this TIF district, it's, that little slice of pie is essentially frozen. So during that time, if that levy goes up or whatever, we're all might, maybe paying a few extra cents, but not really, because if this development wouldn't have happened, it would be the same anyway. But when the TIF district expires, that slice of pie is going to get bigger. And so when the school district comes along after that and spreads that, that levy, I don't have all this taxi terminology, but that pie's bigger, therefore, all of us may pay a few cents less, because, you know, it's the whole pie, and we're all just the little slices. But it's, it's a, it's a concept that's hard to, we always think of these properties as having money, and it's just pushing it out. Here, you take some, and you take some, and that's just not the way it works. It's just how much we're all paying on the levy. So, and the reason that's such an important concept, and I wish I could explain it better, I'll work on it, is that there's, there are folks out there that think because there's a TIF district, and then they hear in the news that the school district is going to cut their budget, you know, by a million dollars. And then they say, well, that's because we have TIF districts. That's not at all because we have TIF districts. There's nothing to do with it. Whatever reason the, the school district cuts their budget, or we cut our budget, is wholly independent. And whatever their budget is, they're going to go spread it across all the property owners. And, and that is just not, you know, those two don't go together. So I just want to make that point. And it's, again, it gets really confusing, but in all the research I've done, there's literally zero impact at the end of the day on a, from a financial perspective.
And that's the way it is for all taxing authorities, not just school districts.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Other comments, thoughts on this matter? It's something that we've had in front of us now for several months. We have approved the project, as mentioned earlier. And so now we're trying to figure out how to help them finance this thing. So we have a Resolution 2018-120 in front of us that would accomplish the purposes that we've discussed. Any further discussion? All those in favor, we can handle this by voice. All those in favor of adopting this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right. Very good. Next phase of affordable housing in, in Edina. And thanks for all those, those good inputs on this particular matter. Appreciate it. All right. That's the end of our public hearing portion of our agenda this evening, and we're going to move on to reports and recommendations. And the first matter we have in front of us is something that everybody on this council was concerned about a few weeks ago, and it looks like we've fashioned a good solution here. And that is Resolution 2018. This is in Reports and Recommendations, A. Continuation of Temporary Parking Restrictions on France Avenue. And Director Milner has this matter.
Thanks, Mayor, members of council. If you recall, back in December of 2017, staff came in front of you asking for some leeway on parking on France Avenue. And that was relation, relation to the Market Street project. There were some challenges with parking as part of that. Those requirements were from January 1st of 2018 until October of this year. I was back here a couple of times asking to potentially extend it. We've heard some comments from some residents. I met with those residents and went back out. And before you tonight is some of those, what I would recommend based on those conversations. So the graphic on the screen shows no parking from 49th Street to north of the driveway at 4824 France Avenue. Since this graphic was developed, I've had further conversations with the residents, and we want to move that no parking sign 90 feet north of the driveway. So it'll be just to the, off of this page. And we, we believe that meets the requirements and the concerns of the residents at this time to extend it for one more year, till the end of October. And we would seek additional feedback towards next fall, come back again in front of this board, and decide whether or not we go back to the original no parking restrictions that were adopted in 1994, or some other variation based on some further feedback. So at this time, I would recommend council approve this parking plan with that one change of moving that northern no parking sign 40 more feet north. We can install two signs tomorrow. We already have the sign shop ready to go out and install two signs, because there's existing poles out there. We can attach them to when we took the other signs down. There's two or three additional signs that we need to do locates and do the additional installation. That'll take a little bit more time. But tomorrow we could get out the one shown on the north end, and the one in the middle, just so, so we can get two of those up right away, and that should make some improvements until we can get them all installed. So.
Yeah, good. Terrific work with the neighborhood. Questions for Director Milner?
I do.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. Looking at the resolution, then, number one in the resolution would be edited?
It should say 90 feet instead of 50 feet.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
So if you make that correction, then we can do this. And it's a temporary condition again until we come back next October.
Yep.
Do you want to move Resolution 2018-113? Member Brindle, was the change to, from 50 feet to 90 feet?
I do. So moved.
Second? Got a motion second to adopt Resolution 2018-113 as modified, changing first resolution provision from 50 feet north of the driveway at, for 4824 France Avenue, to 49th Street, to 90 feet north of the driveway for 4824 France Avenue to 49th Street. Any further discussion?
Yes. Just quickly to acknowledge the neighbors along France Avenue there who came forward and told us what would work best and be safest coming out of their driveways. And thank you to Director Milner for working with our residents.
Thank you. Member Brindle, Member Stewart?
Yeah, I, I too just want to commend staff for engaging with residents who are concerned about this. And I thought the, it's so good to see it when people work together and come to a good resolution, and I hope we can do it more often.
Well, I think in this, in this regard, it's a good temporary measure. I know there's still some further concerns that we need to address next year when we come back and we're going to work with those residents again.
And I thought the input from the neighbors, affected neighbors was really helpful. We got it a couple of weeks ago. So, thank you very much. All right, we got a motion in a second with regard to Resolution 2018-113. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, passing the resolution as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right, we've, now moving on to seven or eight B, I should say, Resolution 2018-119, which is the donations resolution that we see every few weeks. Is there a motion on that matter?
So moved.
Got a motion second to adopt Resolution 2018-119, which accepts donations on behalf of the city of Edina. As folks know, we need to have a four-fifth vote of the council to accept a donation to the city. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Yep.
Yep, motion in a second. And any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And we have one donation this period, reporting period, a generous gift from the Edina Lions Club to the Park and Rec Department for the Edina Senior Center, a laptop for the senior center at a cost of $1,200. Edina Lions, thank you We should all be there for the next waffle or pancake feed to help them continue this philanthropy.
You should be. Yes, that's right.
That's a great way to spend part of a Sunday morning. Correspondence and petitions. Manager Neil, anything come freshly to the dais that we need to know about? Okay. Aviation noise update, Member Brindle?
The only thing that I have, skies have been quiet. I have not received an email or a call recently. And that just goes to show, everybody gets their noise. And so the noise is going somewhere else currently. It'll, it'll be back. But when that happens, the system is working. The, the next meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee is a week from tomorrow. It is an evening meeting. Trying to make the meeting times more accessible, so having some daytime meetings, and then we're trying out an evening meeting of the NAC itself. There are neighborhood listening sessions in various communities. Those are always evening meetings. But this is actually a meeting of the committee itself. So it's next Wednesday, November 28th, at 6:30 at MAC Headquarters.
Good. Manager Neil, anything further on that particular topic?
Nothing more to add to that.
All right, good. Mayor and council comments, let's start with Member Fisher.
All right. I only have one comment tonight. I'm actually happy that Mr. Anderson is here, because I would love you to get this in your calendar. So I know I've mentioned this before, but we've got our, our developers all locked and ready to go for the panel discussion on affordable housing. So we've got five panelists that are going to be here to talk about, take questions, actually, from folks that are here. But also, we're going to focus in on our affordable housing policy, what, you know, what are the challenges from the developer's perspective? What are the opportunities that might exist? And, and these are developers that are either already building something under our policy, or about to build something. And then we've got, we're mixing in different types and trying to get that perspective. And again, that's Wednesday, December 5th, from 7:00 to 8:30 in this room. And, you know, we're going to have the developers up here, and we're all going to be down there, and hopefully, we can have a really lively discussion.
Thank you. Member Sutton?
Just one item to update folks on. We had our monthly meeting of the League of Minnesota Cities Board of Directors last Thursday. The big item on the agenda was approval of the legislative policies that the, that the league adopts every year. Those are a set of policies that guides its efforts at the legislature in representing cities across the state in front of the legislature. And it's wide-ranging on, I mean, every topic you can possibly imagine, and they kind of roll from year to year, and are adopted, and amended, and tweaked, and changed. And one that I wanted to just share of note, there's a couple of folks, Sue Nissen and Luanne Waddick in our community, who've been working on reducing use of salt in roadways. And working with them, we were able to amend one of the environmental policies to support the notion of some legislation that would give incentives to private salt applicators to reduce their use of salt on roadways. And so I think that was a nice step forward. I thank them for their advocacy on that. And I was pleased that the league was able to include that in its legislative policies for 2019. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you. Member Brindle?
I have a few things, so I'll try to be quick. Last night, there was an open house held by the South Dale, Greater South Dale Area Working Group. Just an enormous body of work going on by that group. And, and it was well-attended. And then, November 12th, since our last council meeting, I attended and performed at the Rotary Area 3 Veterans' Day Lunch. It was really terrific. Edina resident, retired Brigadier General Denny Schulstedt was the emcee. And, and it was, as, as usual, this is an annual thing. And it's, it's really, it's very moving. And it's a great thing for, for our community. Then, Director Milner, when are the Lime Bikes going to go to the warehouse for the winter?
They are. I think they're all gone now, or there's only a few left in the next week, week or so.
Vernon, Vernon Avenue, where you turn in to go to Highland School, there is one.
They're picking them up, and it's going to be.
Are they picking them up?
Yep.
Okay.
So, most of them are picked up.
Great, terrific. Speaking of the Edina Lions, on November 13th, they held their piece poster contest. This is an annual contest where they recruit artwork from area schoolchildren. And there were some, I don't even know, there must have been 90, maybe 100 posters. And, and the, the theme this year was kindness matters. And so we picked, we picked a winner from a younger age group, and like nine to 11, I think, eight to 11, and then picked a winner in a second place from 11 to 13. So those will be framed by Blick Art, and they will be hung in the Edina Art Center. I went on my first ever police ride-along on November 19th. Member Fisher, my night was completely different than yours. The screen was blank. So we drove around, we had a great conversation. And, you know, the officer, Sergeant David Busalis, we, we spoke, he spoke to a person whose back lights didn't work. The, the riding lights in the back didn't work. And then there was just an alarm call, because there was a door that was open in the back of a house, and the alarm was tripped. That was our evening.
Clearly, the prospective criminals who were around heard that you were on the, on the job.
I guess.
They were afraid of you, Mary.
That's right, that's right.
Or I know how to pick the hot nights.
I guess. Today's paper, the Metro Player of the Year, All Metro Football, Matt Kavanaugh, Edina.
And if you ever attended.
This is, this is a big deal for Edina to be in here.
If you ever attended an Edina football game this fall, Matt Kavanaugh's name was called almost every play.
Almost every, yep. Just a very impressive young man. He's a senior. He's headed to Harvard. And he's, he is, he's just very impressive, from a terrific family. So congratulations to Matt, and congratulations to Edina Football for, for producing a player like that. And then finally, just happy Thanksgiving, safe travels if you're traveling, and have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you. Member Stewart?
Thank you. On Thursday, November 8th, Edina sponsored an Urban Vision Symposium at the Doubletree Hotel, which I think we all attended. And it was, I thought, another really informative day. And I think there's, it's good for us as a community to have these learning opportunities. That was good. I know that, I was unable to attend, but I know there was also a forum on the future of Edina Schools that night. I don't know if anybody else might have attended that.
I did.
I did.
Yeah. We also had a recognition of Veterans' Day recently, and we again extend our thanks to all who've served our nation in capacity. And just really, you know, what we have here in the United States is a remarkable thing, and we owe a huge debt of gratitude to all who helped make that possible. I, oh, I had a root canal during the last couple of weeks. That was good fun.
That's my condolences.
Yeah. On November 15th, we did have an HRE meeting in the morning, and then immediately following, there was a ribbon cutting for the north ramp at 50th and France. I was actually unable to attend the ribbon cutting, but I do want to have people be sure to know that that north ramp is open. Shopping is possible at 50th and France without having to use valet service, if you're a person who doesn't like using it. But I think the valet is still operating, is it not?
It exists.
Yeah. And then, so you have options, people, and please do patronize our businesses at 50th and France. This past Saturday, November 17th, we had a town hall meeting. Always a great opportunity to hear from people from the community and have sort of a more relaxed, open conversation about any topic under the sun that's of interest to people. And then, as Member Brindle said, last night, we had a South Dale District planning meeting that I think most all of us attended. Plus, I know I saw Ron Anderson there. So good to have everybody there to do some learning and listening. I too want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I have so much to be thankful for. I am thankful for all of you on the city council and the staff members. I have really had a wonderful experience working with all of you, and so I thank you for that. And then coming up on Thursday, the 29th, a week after Thanksgiving, is the Annual Meeting for Metro Cities. I'm on I'm on the Board of Directors for Metro Cities, but all are invited to the annual meeting, which is at Brookview Golden Valley. The meeting actually starts in the late morning and runs through the afternoon, but then the, starting at 4:45 in the afternoon, is sort of the annual meeting stuff. So, lot going on there, but check that out on the Metro Cities website if you have an interest, and see the whole agenda there.
The Brookview Community Center is beautiful.
In Golden Valley, right?
They did a great job of that building.
Right.
Yeah. It's really nice.
Worth getting there just to see that.
It is really nice.
Good. Thank you, Member Stewart. A couple of quick things for me. On the 9th of November, that was the day after the Urban Design Symposium and the Edina Public School Forum, I had breakfast with six Edina High School seniors that were volunteers that had been picked by Rotary to have breakfast with the mayor, and I picked up the tab, and it was a great conversation with all these wonderful young people that had done some terrific volunteer work themselves, including assisting the folks that got hurt when that, we had that sudden acceleration issue with that Toyota that went through the window at the Holiday Station at Interlochen and Vernon. So some of the people got hurt there, and some of these kids assisted on that. That was, it was good. Good to visit with some of them, and one of them, last night, was a commended scholar, and I'll get to that in a minute, at the National Merit Scholar Award Ceremony. On the 12th, Monday, the 12th, we had the Regional Council of Mayors meeting, and then we had that together with what we call Minnesota Mayors Together. As you know, we've been working on this urban rural divide problem. Some of the mayors were there from greater Minnesota, and then we had Dave Durenberger, former U.S. Senator there, and Lori Sturdivant from the Strib, who's just about now ready to retire, have written a book together, and they were there to talk about some of these same issues of how people can more effectively work together to accomplish common goals. That same night, the Edina Community Foundation put on a terrific event out at Hughes Centrum. It was women in the military, and they had a lady who was over 90, who had soloed when she was 13 years old, all the way to Meredith Benson, who is the daughter of Bob and Marilyn Benson. Marilyn was a teacher at Edina High School for years and years. Bob acted with our vets committee, and Meredith went to the Air Force Academy and is a career Air Force officer, and came back just for this event and did a wonderful job. On the 14th, over at the TAB, we had a special meeting with a guy named Dr. John Cosarda from the University of North Carolina. I'd seen him speak down in Memphis when we were down there working on this project where we're trying to figure out how to get Memphis and the Twin Cities to work better together to, you know, foster economic development strategies for both communities. And he is the author of this concept called Aerotropolis. And if you think of the airport as a city, and everything that spreads out from there as part of the Aerotropolis, it's this notion that you can build a whole economy around an airport, and they're doing that same thing, that very thing, in China now, and he's working on three Aerotropolis projects over in China. So that was a fascinating presentation. And then that night was the Greater MSP Annual Meeting. Good report out by them on activities in the region. The North Ramp Cutting was mentioned. And then on the 16th, Friday, last Friday morning, I did a presentation, a kind of a mini State of the City for a coffee group that meets over at Good Sam Methodist Church on Friday mornings, and spent a couple hours with them, talking about what was going on in the city. And then, of course, we had our town hall meeting, and then before that, we had walked with the mayor out at the, at the Braemar Dome, which is really a terrific facility. It was the first time I'd done any walking in there, but the morning side, Men's Athletic Club was playing soccer, and there were several of us walking. Wasn't a very good turnout, but still a decent turnout. And then, on the, I wanted to tell folks about this National Merit Reception, which we had last night, and we have 17 National Merit semifinalists, and we have 30 commended students, and I just thought folks should be aware, watch for publication on their names. I won't read them all now, but just a terrific group of young people that recognized that in the context of receiving their awards, their favorite teacher, and got to say a few words about their favorite teacher. And then, if you want to get something else on your calendars, and this was something that was kind of the buzz of the Greater MSP meeting the other night, and that was the day that we got the affirmation from the Federal Transit Authority that we were going to be able to go forward on Southwest LRT. And so the groundbreaking for Southwest LRT is Friday, November 30th, 2:30, and it's going to be at the Future Southwest LRT Rail Support Facility, 610 16th Avenue South and Hopkins. And I'll give this to Manager Neil, and he can scan it and send it around to everybody. I think that would be a terrific event for people to attend if they can possibly attend. And then I've got a TAB meeting tomorrow. And then, on the 24th, you should think about this as well, we do the tree lighting down at 50th and France, about 5 o'clock in the evening, and I'll be down there and with a bunch of kids, get that Christmas tree lit for the season. So, that's it for me. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things, both city clerk-related, actually. One is that we have a retirement event coming up for Deb Mangan, and I think we've talked about this before, but her retirement event is Thursday, the 29th, at 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon, and it's here, just in the council chambers, right outside the council chambers. We're expecting, we're expecting a pretty good turnout, so we hope, we hope you can attend as well at 4:00 p.m. that day.
What was that date again, please?
4:00 p.m., Thursday, November 29th.
Same day as the Metro Cities Board meeting.
Second thing is to introduce you to your new city clerk. Her name is Sharon Allison. She's sitting just to the right of Councilmember Fisher. We feel very fortunate to have Sharon on our team. She's been working as our executive assistant, well, she's been working for, let's go all the way back, she's been working with Chad in engineering for how long, Sharon, 15 years? Okay. And for the last couple of, well, for the last couple of years, almost a couple of years, she's been working as our executive assistant in the admin, but it was always our plan at some point for her to transition into the city clerk's office, and we're looking forward to Sharon kind of moving into that role. She's been, she's had a chance to have a lot of conversation and transition time with Deb, and so we're looking forward to that, and I think Deb's looking forward to that as well. So, you'll have more than, more than a bit of exposure to Sharon as she works in that role going forward in the future.
All right.
Thanks. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Good. That prompt anything for anyone else? As we stand adjourned.
Hey, Jim.